Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for November 21, 2023. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to again, please call the roll.
Trustee Dany?
Yes, here.
Cansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. In our wonderful new format, we do have a second bite at the apple here due to our attorney's request. But if anyone would like to address the board during the committee, now you'll get a chance to do that at the beginning of the committee meetings as well. So if there's anything on the agenda that you'd like to address, kindly step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Is there anybody that would like to address the board at this time during the committee?
My name is Mike DeGola. I've been a resident of the village for 28 years. Had two residences here. I'm at 671 Versailles. I had my original house until about two years ago. Even though I bought another house in the village, I couldn't sell the first one, so I ended up renting it out for a long period of time, and I ended up paying the exit tax even though I had already bought a house. It paid my share. Most recently, I had where, two months, I've had exorbitant water bills. I approached Todd Rowden, Dowden?
Dowden?
Dowden.
There you go. Explaining how, you know, there must be, you know, first I had somebody come out, inspect. They suggested that there could be something happening inside the home where there's running water. And I own multiple properties. I'm well aware of listening to water. You know, I've dealt with tenants. I have experience with that situation. So I didn't have a problem inside my home. I suggest that there may have been somebody turning my water on while me and my wife were out as a function of retaliation because I threatened to call the cops on them. Todd Dowden offered that. He couldn't do anything for me. I've been a resident here for a ton of years. I've paid taxes. I paid the escape tax or the penalty tax for a house that I actually bought in another house. You know what? I think I deserve some level of consideration. You know, just because it theoretically flowed through the meter, it didn't necessarily, it wasn't something I got benefit for, and I shouldn't be penalized by somebody's bad actions.
Do we have any kind of exceptions for that for people that aren't moving out?
Talking about the transfer stamp?
Exit tax, yeah.
We have a one-year period. So if you have a rental property, I don't know how many years it was rented for, but we have a one-year timeframe in the ordinance as far as the transfer stamp.
I would suggest that we make a change on that. That doesn't make any sense if they're buying in Bartlett again. Everybody agree with that?
I'll be honest, it was an extended period because we couldn't sell the house, and then it was something that we just dealt with. And, you know, we had people that were in there. They were in, we had long-term tenants for different durations, you know, and then finally, it just became untenable, and we just got rid of the house when it was in the midst of COVID. And we had a governor saying that you don't have to pay your rent. So it put us landlords at risk for eroding our pocketbooks.
I would like us to take a look at that anyway. If you're moving in Bartlett, you shouldn't pay an exit tax if you're buying another house in Bartlett. That's ridiculous. But as far as the water is concerned, Dan, do you have any ideas as far as, how much are we talking, or how many gallons was it?
I have an in-ground pool in the backyard. I could have filled my in-ground pool twice in the last two, within these two months. You know, I understand that, you know, I should be held responsible for what my usual consumption is, even a little bit higher as a function of, you know, having to refill the pool as a, you know, as a function of evaporation. But somebody was messing with our water. It wasn't that it was water inside the house. I would have heard it, and I would have been well aware of it.
Dan, can you meet, or have one of you guys meet with him and try to work something out?
When we had the first month of, we got the first read, and it was high. So what we do is we tag their home, and we tell them they've had unusual high usage. And that was in, we didn't hear. So then he got the bill for it, and then, I think on the 20th or the 25th, then he called us. And by that time, over a month had gone by since we originally tagged the home. So if he would have called us when we tagged the home, then we would have been able to resolve the issue, I believe, earlier.
I take exception with that comment, only from the standpoint that the sticker was left on my garage door on the handle of the third car garage. And when I saw it, I called that week. So it wasn't, it wasn't that I let it sit for duration, let alone when I saw the first bill and it was $200, that's when I got on the phone. And they, and the, you know, I used to actually call Loretta. She used to work in the water department for many years. And I would always maintain, I would check on the rental to make sure that my tenants were being timely in their payments, and also get my bill so that I didn't miss it. Every so often, I was a little bit lapsed, but you know what? I always took care of my responsibility with the village.
Hey, Mike, I'll work something out with Todd, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this, the board at this time?
I just want to comment on what you said about the transfer tax. I agree wholeheartedly with that. If you're selling your home, you're going through that. Dan just sold a home, and he's-
Ask him twice. Three times is charm.
Moving into his new house over the weekend, and he'll celebrate Thanksgiving there now.
We'll all be there.
Really, if you're selling your house in Bartlett and moving into Bartlett, I concur that that should be reevaluated.
We take a look at that.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mike. Anyone online like to address the
board, Chris, for the committee?
No, there is none.
Anyone else in the chamber? Here and then we'll move on to the standing committee reports this evening. First standing committee report is Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Gunstein.
President Wallace, tonight we have two items. The first one is AGI trucking Brewster Creek Business Park Lot 15. The petitioner is requesting a site plan review for a proposed 15,000-square-foot warehouse facility for AGI trucking. The site contains 36 parking stalls and office warehouse for employees parking, which meets the zoning requirements. There are 30, there are 62 trailer and semi-truck parking spaces. The petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow outdoor truck and trailer parking. As a discussion at the Planning and Zoning Committee, the petitioner added that a second row of evergreen trees along Munger Road to further screen the outdoor trucks and storages. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a required public hearing, reviewed the petitioner's request, and recommended approval at their meeting November 2, 2023. That, I will turn it over to Kristy Stone.
This is very similar to the project that we approved for Lot 22B earlier this evening.
Okay. Are we making a motion to approve this, or send this?
Send it to the board.
All right. Any questions? That, I'll send it on to the board. Second item is Bartlett Horizon Concept Plan. I apologize, I have to get to it here. The petitioner is requesting a concept plan review for an affordable senior housing development located at the northeast corner of Bartlett Road and Kime Trail. The site plan includes a three-story, 52-unit senior living apartment facility. The proposed elevation utilizes a variety of materials of cement, brick, and metal in differing patterns to provide visual interest. If the committee of the whole gives a favorable review to the project, the petitioner would prepare a full development application requesting the following: site plan review, special use permit to allow senior housing, rezoning of ER 2-3 to SR-6 PUD, amending the future land use plan to designate the property as attached residential medium density. And with that, I will turn it over to Kristy Stone.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. This site was originally part of the Durwood Forest PUD plan back in the early 80s. It's been owned by the Archdiocese. The original plan was for it to be a church. Nothing, that obviously, the site's never developed. Because this does not match the village's future land use plan, we recommend that before someone submits a full development application, they come in for a concept to kind of get a feel for the board on what they think about changing the plan. The petitioners are present and would like to give a brief presentation.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Stivers. I'm the Executive Director of the Alden Foundation, and I'll ask my colleague Deniz himself.
Michael Bailey from Alden Design Group.
Thank you so much for taking a few minutes for us to walk you through our vision for bringing a new affordable housing community of independent living for seniors to Bartlett through the creation of Bartlett Horizon Senior Living Community. The Alden Foundation is a standalone 501(c)(3) nonprofit developer of affordable housing. We've been developing affordable housing for the last 30 years in the Chicagoland area. We have developed over 15 communities. We have over 1,000 units across the Chicago suburbs. And we are a developer who is entirely focused in our mission on bringing more affordable housing for seniors to local communities. We are a vertically integrated organization, so we have our own design and architecture firm, general contractor, realty firm, to make sure that we can provide exceptional experiences for all the seniors that we serve. When we come to a community, we want to make sure that we're being a part of that community. And so these are some pictures of examples of our existing communities. I want to talk about, though, who we serve. So who we serve in communities when we develop them. First of all, the people that we serve at a Horizon community come from your local community. They're your neighbors. There are people who have lived in Bartlett for decades, who want the safety, security, and stability of knowing that they are not going to get priced out of the community that they raise their kids in, go to church in, and have built a life in. The average age of one of our residents is 77 years old. Their average annual income is about $27,000. 80% of our residents are women. 90% of our residents are single occupancy, and the average person stays over five years in our community. So again, they're wanting that safety and that stability. And so that's who we would serve through the development of this project. One thing you're going to find, despite having 15 communities here in the Chicago suburbs, you're not going to walk into any of our properties, and they're going to be the exact same. The reason for that is because we want to be true partners with each village that we work with. And so we design our properties around what the village is looking for on that site. We also want to make sure we're building communities, so we'll do outreach to the community to make sure that the groups that are already serving seniors in Bartlett are part of the process from the ground up in bringing this community to your village. Again, seniors is what we do every single day. We understand who we serve, and we build to meet their unique needs. We make sure that also that you would never walk into any of our properties, at least I would hope not, and think of the word affordable in the first 20 words you think of. We invest tons of money into these communities to make sure that they are world-class regarding design, architecture, and the experience, because we want every resident in a community, regardless of how much they're paying in rent, to feel like they're at home. You'll see here some pictures of our amenities: movie theaters, pool tables, game rooms, libraries, lobbies. These are all things that are a part of our affordable housing communities, exercise equipment. And so we make sure that we create lots of community space, because again, we're trying to bring a community that creates engagement amongst our seniors. We learned recently during COVID, more than anything, how, what isolation can do to people, and especially our senior population. And so we build our buildings to create engagement for seniors who often are really looking for that. Your neighbors are also your friends. And so with that being said, I want to hand it over to Michael to walk you through specifically what we're envisioning for this over-five-acre site here in Bartlett.
Good evening, everyone. The project would be a three-story wood frame construction, fully sprinkled with the main entrance off of Bartlett Road. There would be a full access fire lane around the project for fire department, the ability to fight a fire if we so needed it. We would have a secondary entrance off onto Kime Trail. The building itself is, again, 52 units. I believe the ratio is nine, nine-two bedroom and 43 one-bedroom units. We would provide 52 parking. The rezoning of the land to SR-6 would enable us to proceed without any request of variances. We would meet all Enterprise Green Community, ComEd, Multifamily, Energy Star, National Program, all-electric. It's as much state-of-the-art as we can possibly put in it with all of the energy requirements, plus whatever that even the state of Illinois would require.
One thing we'll just talk about on the unit mix. So as Michael was mentioning, 52 units, about, you know, 43 one-bedroom, nine two-bedrooms. These units are going to be serving people who are bringing in between 30% to 60% of the area median income for the Village of Bartlett. So what that means is, is that in order to qualify for these units, you would need to have an annual income of between $23,000 and $46,000 per year in order to qualify for these units. The one-bedroom units at, would be based, again, it's based on your income. At the lowest, rents today, if we were to open today, would be $501 for a one-bedroom apartment, going up to $1,100. And the two-bedroom units would be $1,300. So again, we try to make sure these are as affordable as possible, and make sure that it is associated directly with your income. And so there would be a mix of different types of units throughout the 52. We would have a community room, a game room with billiards table, exercise room, computer labs, libraries, and community spaces for people to engage. And as Michael said, these are all-electric, fully sustainable, green buildings that we build as well.
Do you have medical facilities onsite at all?
So we don't. So we are an entire, so this is, yes, great question. So we are, this is an entirely independent living facility. So we make the decision as developers to build out all the community spaces, but the intention is that our residents are able to live independently, and so there are no medical or support services. It's as if you were going to any other, you know, apartment complex or apartment community, whether it was multifamily or senior. That's the product here.
Does the other portion of the payment fall under some kind of Medicare?
No. So, yeah, so no. So the way it actually works is, we would be pursuing low-income housing tax credits through the state's competitive process for this project. And so we are able to, through those and layers of different financing, able to develop this property and still maintain those rents for, at least, I mean, at least 30 years. But we have, we're a never-sell, always-hold, always-affordable nonprofit, so we would be long-term affordable. And so as part of that, actually, the way that we structure these is, we will apply to get the state credits. We will also layer in a first mortgage. We will layer in soft funds, which will come in the form of home or trust funds from the state. We are in early conversations with DuPage County to secure home funds for this site as well, which would layer in the financing. And so by adding all these layers of financing, we're able to keep those rents low and affordable for local Bartlett residents to move in without charging this. This project is going to be about $21 million that we'll invest in the actual property itself.
So with the mortgage, is there actually a mortgage application that's underwritten thoroughly?
Yes. So we submit, so we underwrite all the layers of financing. We submit to the state. And then the first mortgage is, the state is actually the provider of the first mortgage. And so it's an interest-bearing first mortgage that we pay as a portion of the layered financing.
Kristy, what's our current zoning over there?
It's currently zoned ER 3 PUD, which is a state residential with minimum lots of about 20,000 square feet.
So ER 3, and-
A state, a state, you said?
State, a state residential, right. And we'd have to change your zoning, obviously, on that parcel, okay?
Correct.
And then we also would have to take into consideration the height of the building, because I believe the other residents in that area, the other adjoining residents in it, there's a height requirement that we have there, a limit, isn't there?
Correct. But if they rezoned SR-6, they'd be allowed to have the three-story building.
Where else do we have SR-6 in the village?
SR-6, a lot of our townhome developments are SR-6, or similar to SR-6. Asbury Place, Haron's Landing, Castle Creek are planned developments that pretty much follow the SR-6 zoning, as well as parts of Amber Grove.
Is it restricted to 55 and over?
Oh, this facility is 62-plus. It's 62-plus. All of our communities are 62-plus. The 62-plus distinction also ensures there's no additional burden put on local school districts by the creation of these communities. And so, yeah, all of our communities are 62-plus.
They can't have somebody else, someone younger move in with them. Is that true?
So there's, so there's a lot of guidelines around the affordability piece on that, and how many people can actually stay in there, and how it affects their income eligibility. And so no one long-term under the age of 18 would be staying with any of our residents.
And who regulates that?
The state. So the only housing development, the only housing development authority. I mean, but we would never do it as a, we would never allow it as a developer, because it would jeopardize our entire portfolio.
Do you have other communities?
18 and 62.
So 18 and 62. So 18 and 62, again, as long as the household income of those parties who were residing there do not exceed the income limits, then that would be allowable. So we have, again, nine two-bedrooms, and in those cases, there may be a situation where there are two people. But again, they cannot be over the income limit, otherwise they would not be eligible.
Even if they're under 62?
Correct.
They could still live there?
They could live there, they could live there as a add-on for a temporary basis. They would not be on a lease, though. They could not be on a lease. In order to be on the lease, in accordance with state regulations, you must be, you must meet the age restriction requirement.
Sure. But a lot of people live in places that they don't, they're not on the lease.
So yes, technically, right? But, I mean, our responsibility, we'd make sure that our tenants and our residents are in compliance with their lease, and that's on our property management team. And if someone were to be in breach of their lease, we would address that with the resident and make sure that they're threatening, they're putting at risk the eligibility of their unit by having someone that's not 62.
Wouldn't it be possible for you to provide us with a sample lease from one of your other properties?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you have any of the other properties that are, like how this one would be like right in where a community or a subdivision is in? And if so, what pushback have you had?
Can I jump back and just answer, or add on one more thing? Along with the facility, there is a daily office manager who comes in during business hours, Monday through Friday. And one of the apartments is also dedicated to a full-time live-in maintenance person. So we have eyes on the project at all times and during all business hours during the week.
Regarding the similar or like projects, so we do have other communities, New Lennox, we have a property in New Lennox that is right next to a subdivision. And so we are always trying to make design decisions where we can to make sure, and then also early and often engage with that local community. So in this case, you'll see on the concept plan for this, that we're dedicating 35% of the site to maintaining the wooded area that is there to create a significant buffer between our building and any of the residential. And so we have retained a large amount of wooded area of the five-acre site in order to keep that, and we hope that will help address some of the local residents' concerns.
I'll have to call up Mary Agoski and see how he liked it. New Lennox.
Question, the Joe Kime homes that are backing this property, they're up elevated from this property. Do we have an idea where they line up with the third floor or second floor currently, based off of what we have now for data?
We do not at this time. I would say if we suggest, if we recommend that they move forward with a full application, we have them kind of give us the profile of that for comparison's sake.
And then the site plan that you guys have here, that's preliminary plan, correct?
This is just conceptual.
So there's no, there could be additional land taking up for retention pond, is my point?
We've just, correct. We've done a brief overview of this. They did change their plans. Originally, they had two detention ponds. They combined one. So this is, that is at the low point, which is in all likelihood where they would put it.
Have you ever ran up Kime Trail?
Yeah, it's pretty elevated. Well, I know all that water, all that water runs downhill.
Fast.
Very fast. So needing more detention, I want to make sure we're not taking it away from the trees that are blocking the residents' view of this building.
Right. Like, this is just a general concept plan. They have yet to do any engineering. We don't require that at this time, just because of the expense. If they came in for preliminary, they would.
The other thing I would ask the petitioner, have you built these buildings with hip roof or peak roof on them versus the flat roof, when you're integrating into more of a residential area?
I'm sorry, could you just repeat that last question?
Have you built these buildings with hip roofs or peak roofs, you know, shingle-type of roof, where you're integrating it more into a residential area?
Absolutely. One of the concept elevations that, actually, this is our, this is New Lennox, this is just a mansard roof. So it's shingled. Behind the mansard is all of the air conditioners for all of the units. We put them on the roof, so we don't have them on the ground.
I personally like that view a little bit better for that area. The fire station has a mansard roof around it, the homes do. And depending where the elevation of the building falls, in the winter, when the tree leaves fall, those people are going to have a direct shot to your roof's mechanical equipment, depending on the elevation. I do like this look, myself personally, for that area.
That is something that we are absolutely more than willing to work with the village for the appearance review, the appearance of this building. We are not set into any distinct flavor or style at this time. There was just, one of the requirements was to submit a conceptual elevation of a similar project, which we did. If you do look at that site plan, what we have done is, we have taken, based on some of the GIS maps, there are some of the floor elevations that I did some approximation and some guesstimation for the surrounding homes up on those hills. So they are located on this plan. There's no way I could read it from here, though. But I do, we did sort of figure out where the base of our first floor would be, and then we have the approximated elevations of the existing first floors. And they're all about 15 to 20 feet higher than our first floor. Our building is only about 32 feet 6 inches tall. So they're going to be looking down on our roof or over our building for the most part.
I think that the concept design is beautiful. I do. I think it, you know, I've seen your buildings before, and I've seen a similar building. This is similar in its height and proximity to residential, as Claire Oaks is. Where if you drive down, is it Regency Drive, you can see into the Claire Oaks development, so.
So on this site plan that we have in front of us, the, the main entrance to this building would be facing South Bartlett Road? Is that how we, okay. And are there other locations that are, I mean, maybe you could, when you send the sample lease, maybe you could give us a list of some other, of your other locations, and maybe we could do in our own time?
Happy to. We have, the most current one that was built is in Warrenville. New Lennox is, is the second most current. Addison is actually in the process of, we're completing our construction documents to start construction next year. One of the things to mention, you mentioned equipment on the roof. These are all-electric buildings. There are maybe four heat pumps on the roof and a air-cool, a heat pump system for the domestic water system. There is very little on the roofs of these buildings anymore.
Well, I think your concept plan is of great. However, I'd have to think about this a little more, because I don't know if this is necessarily, I've never envisioned something like this at that location. And I think that, have you looked at other areas in the village?
So we have. We've done extensive searches to figure out if there's plots of land within the village as to where the development could be competitive through the state process for the tax credits. And ultimately, this is the best option in the Village of Bartlett. And we were able to thankfully negotiate with the Archdiocese. We have a signed purchase and sales agreement. We knew that it being in DuPage County would be favorable, given the fact that DuPage County has supported our Warrenville Horizon development, the Addison project that will start next year. And so ultimately, when you look at all the factors the state looks at, this site is the best available site in the last six months that we've looked for this kind of development to bring a fourth.
In your opinion, it's the best site?
Correct.
You have to live with it.
Correct.
And I'm not, I'm not convinced this is the right location for that. That's not what I envisioned ever. what, what I envisioned ever being at that location. And.
Pretty high-end area of town.
Yeah. I'm not going to support it. I just can't. I think, you know, you said it's the best location. That's your opinion. Well, what about the second-best location? You know, maybe that's something you should consider. But I'm not going to support. The, the concept is great. And I, I love the concept. And everything you talked about is fantastic. Yeah, but I, I can't do it in that location. I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate your feedback. And just to put it in context, the reason that we don't tend to look at, you know, maybe a, a second option or a third option, is just to give you an idea, in the state of Illinois, last year, when we were awarded the Addison Horizon project, that was one of eighteen projects that was awarded. There were seventy projects submitted, and only eighteen will get awarded each year. And so, unfortunately, we do have to operate within the state system that they give us to try to find opportunities and developments that can still allow us to bring affordable housing to communities.
So, if there was, if there were available a location on fifty-nine or Lake Street, that wouldn't fit in with the state's requirements?
So, to give you an idea, without getting like super in the weeds on this, the state maps out every single census tract in the state on different scoring criteria. You have to then layer all of those scoring criteria against a property and see if it's going to score in order to be competitive. It also has to be just like, there's other things, like, for example, it has to be within one mile of a grocery store or, or a full-service market. Like, there are, so there are layers and layers and layers of what allows you to qualify the property. And so, we would look through all those layers for determining eligible or competitive sites.
Well, I think there's a need for this. And I like the concept, the location. I do not think favorably of it. So, at this point, I, I would not support it. Not saying I wouldn't, but just currently, not in this location.
Where would you have it?
It's not my choice.
Kristy, is there a piece of property just a little bit south of there that's also on the market?
That is unincorporated, and I believe that's closer to nineteen acres.
The octagon? That would be an ideal location. You guys want nineteen acres?
We do not, we, we're not going to put a fifty-two-unit building on nineteen acres. I don't think you want that, and we don't want that either.
Do you know if our current assisted living facilities are full in Bartlett?
I'm not sure about that.
Be interesting to find that out. And do we have any feedback on the numbers for our fifty-five and over sales?
Fifty-five and over, where at?
Out in the new development.
So, those are age-targeted. It is not age-restricted. And there are, when we spoke with them, they had sold a total of ten units. They didn't break it down for us whether they were the ranches or not.
Okay. Yeah, I have a tendency to agree with a few of the other board members. It's just a real tricky spot. I, I could envision, I, I think there's a huge need for this particular product, absolutely. It's similar to a place that I'm familiar with. A real good friend of ours lives in Berkshire Hathaway, similar to what this is. It's a, it's a, it's an income-adjusted rent. And that particular facility is fifty-five and over. But Berkshire Hathaway has some of these places as well. And I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it's a great service to our seniors. It's just that the, the location just doesn't seem to make sense to me either.
Is it, is it the size of the building? Is it the type of building? I, I'm just trying to, to get, get some feedback of, you say you don't see this there, but what would you see there? More single-family homes?
Personally, I would. I'd like to see developed ER. It's.
Have any other developers ever approached us in regards to concepts there? Okay. Because the Archdiocese doesn't probably ever want to sell, so.
Maybe we could get that information about occupancy in our current assisted living?
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Facilities and, and see where we stand on that.
So, just for a clarification point, so, assisted living is a different demographic?
Yeah, I understand.
And just to put you, the other locations of our income-restricted in DuPage County are right now on waitlist of a hundred to two-hundred seniors in our three other locations in DuPage County. And so, we have also had a third-party independent market analysis look at Bartlett before we even started this, you know, conversation, to make sure that there was a market demand that would warrant this size of building in the village. And so, we did do that third-party research as well to hopefully see if there was enough of demand to bring our product here long-term.
Yeah.
Most of the residents drive their own cars?
Yeah. So, I would say about seventy percent of our residents have cars, and the others don't, and are driven around by local family, et cetera. But yes, I mean, they're, I mean, they're living independently. They're, they're exercising. They're going to movies. They're going to the grocery store. They just need an affordable and safe and stable place to live, you know? And that's what we try to provide for them. But yeah, it's a, most of them still drive.
Again, I'll tell you, I said it before, I'll repeat it. It's a lovely concept. It's a great concept. But I'm just bothered at the location where it's at. I, I never envisioned anything like that being in that area. I always imagined that would just be developed residentially. And it would be, fall in, it would flow with what's existing there right now. This is, this is just going to stand out. I mean, it's, I don't care how much buffering you do on it, how much landscaping.
You got some very large homes and very large, large lots back up in there?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Any of your properties, single-story?
It's, it's not economically feasible to, to put single-story. And you, we, we would have to cover more of the land, and based on the topography, it would be impossible. We would get one floor and maybe fourteen units. I, I would like to discuss further. We just did our project in Warrenville. We're right at the corner of fifty-nine and, the name of the road is escaping me. And that piece of property was vacant for fifteen years. There was an old restaurant, and everybody.
Is that Duke Parkway? Are you guys at Duke?
No, it's, it's right downtown. It's kitty-corner from Village Hall. And, and that property sat vacant for fifteen-plus years. There was an old restaurant. And every single person that came and voiced their opinion at, at our hearings kept saying about how they thought that they wanted a restaurant back there. But not one company could actually make that piece of property work. Yes, thank you, Batavia. And we had the foresight to actually purchase two extra lots because those first three lots were not, were not developable with, with the building codes. And we ran into resistance. And in, in the end, we'd had no, not one person tell us that they were still sorry that our building was put up. It was.
I would suggest to you that if you were talking about to this board on, about setting up this concept on fifty-nine, you wouldn't even be talking this long. It'd already be gone through.
That's correct.
And that just goes into the point system of trying to get points. It's a.
Yeah. Sounds very tedious.
Extremely competitive.
Yeah.
Process. So, I thank you for listening. I appreciate the discussions.
Any other questions?
Your presentation was great. I think the, the majority of the, the board is just not there yet on this particular project. I know I have questions about it because of the density of this versus the residential lots behind it. I pointed out earlier, Regency, it's pretty, pretty, in the winter, it's a lot of mass building behind the residence, and they have to endure that mostly in the winter. But it is, it's a large structure. But your presentation was great. I think your concept's great. I agree with President Wallace that if you were on Route fifty-nine or Lake Street, it would have been pushed right across the board, you know? So, I do appreciate it. Any other question?
It was great. Great presentation.
Thank you.
I love the concept. I really do. But believe me when I tell you, the location, pick a different location and come back and see us because this is beautiful.
Can I just make one more comment? I appreciate how much time you've given us. So, thank you so much for your feedback and consideration. I believe in being authentic and transparent, and I am so grateful that the staff got us to the agenda. Because of the state's competitive process, we will have to decide whether or not to apply for this project by December eighth, right? And so, getting a favorable or non-favorable reaction at this meeting was going to, we'll have to inform our decision ultimately to whether or not to proceed because it's also, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars we would be committing to the process, et cetera. And so, I just appreciate everyone's candid feedback, even if it's not all exactly what we had hoped.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That said, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. Next up, Community and Economic Development Committee Chairman Gansey.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item, BETA revisions. So, we have.
Let's BETA to death.
Yes. I'm actually going to turn this over to staff to go over the revisions.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Gansey. This program came out in twenty-eighteen, nineteen. And since then, it's been through two revisions, and we're bringing it back to you to look at once again. A lot of the suggestions that were made to us are outlined in the memo. And I'll go through them one by one. And you can feel free to stop me for any questions. One of the first amendments that were discussed was to emphasize ownership, identifying whether the landlord or business is the applicant. We've always required that because it requires landship approval to make any changes. But we, as a staff, we can do a better job of emphasizing that. So, that's one amendment. The next one is to define elements for a business plan, including specific questions for viability, experience, and marketing plan. So, we're going to put together a comprehensive list of questions for those businesses. One of the things that we're going to encourage is to make sure that they're engaged heavily with the Chamber of Commerce. That'll be good for both the business as well as the chamber. The next one is change the financial assistance to a flat fifty percent of eligible expenses. That was one of the suggestions, as well as possibly amending the amount. Expedited BETA grants for signage. That was one of the suggestions for signage, appearance, and facade. One of, that, that came up because we take a sign grant, it goes to the EDC, then it goes to the committee, then it goes to the board. And we had some of the trustees feel like we could expedite that, that process a little bit better. The eight-thousand-dollar number that you see is a recommendation based upon previous sign amounts. The ones that we've seen are in that sixty-five, hundred-dollar range, depending on the size and scope of the sign. The next amendment that we looked at was to remove the ability to apply online but still view the application. That was a great suggestion. We don't want anybody to have to go through filling out that application who's not eligible. So, we have since taken it off the website already. The website should emphasize items which would be eligible and which ones would be not. For example, those items affixed to the building. A draft list is attached, and we can certainly go over some of those if, if you wish. The next item is establishing a timeframe for a business before eligibility for the program. So, not, i.e. not funding startups. Another amendment that was discussed was eliminate the option for reapplication for the same location. Currently, based on one of the previous amendments, a location is eligible for a BETA grant for after two years since, since past receiving the grant. That's what the current allowance is for a BETA. And there's also a lot of the strategic plan. The BETA hits on a lot of the strategic plan points. You can see beneath that. And below that is a current chart of those approved and several pending. And is there any questions so far I can answer?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
First time I read it, I was thinking like, oh, that's good. Move it down to twenty-five thousand. But then I started to wonder, is that going to keep us competitive with other communities? So, I guess I just wanted to hear the, the thoughts on that.
That's a really good question. I think if you look at some of the grants that we've given in the chart that you see, a lot of the fifty-thousand-dollar grants have been kind of for either developments or redevelopments. So, those have been some bigger projects. You know, certainly, that's a, that's a board decision. I mean, as somebody who works with the economic development staff, it's certainly a, a nice tool to have in the toolbox. But that's certainly for you folks to, to decide.
I think I had checked out, you had St. Glenco and Streamwood and Hanover I checked out. And twenty-five thousand is the most that any of those, just for those three, we're looking at.
Yeah, it was just something I started thinking about was, as I was looking at this.
Can you, can we, can we take a moment and can you review the, the potential eligible costs?
Sure, absolutely.
I would be more inclined to limit the percentage of the cost of the project versus the dollar amount. Somebody wants to put a four-million-dollar improvement downtown, and we've got a hundred thousand available, I would, I would much be more inclined to do the percentage of the cost of the improvement versus any type of a limit on it.
Sure. And I, I think too, one thing that we evaluate and you should take into consideration when looking at this is the nature of the request. We've granted some monies, for example, for code-compliance items, like a trash enclosure. That's going to be different than a development of a bar and grill that might bring vitality to a key corner in Bartlett. So, I think one thing to consider is, is the nature of the, of the request.
So, from a legal standpoint, if, is there a mechanism that we have, let's say, as President Wallace mentioned, we had a four-million-dollar development, and we wanted to give them two-hundred thousand dollars. Is there a way to do that without giving them BETA money? Can we take it out of the general fund? Can we pass an ordinance? What can we do to stimulate or make that impact for the developer?
So, for some of the larger projects, we're always going to have the option of like a sales tax sharing agreement. And that's what we've done with like Aldi and more. So, that is one tool for some of those larger projects. That is going to be on a case-by-case basis by the board, coming to the board. It's not going to be set in these rules. You know, that's, we're going to negotiate that every time. Same thing with TIF projects. That's something where, where the board's going to negotiate the specifics of those on a case-by-case process. We're not going to have a set, you know, here's, you come in, check these boxes, you're going to get these TIF dollars, at least for the larger projects. So, we do have those tools already for the, I guess, big-scale projects. But we're certainly able to target BETA based on a sliding scale of, you know, if you're not going to reach that level of a million-dollar TIF project, but you're going to be three-hundred, four-hundred thousand dollars in, you know, eligible costs, we could put a sliding scale in there to say fifty percent up to this level, seventy-five percent up to this level, things like that.
And I think trustee Hopkins, you raised a really good point. The board is always able to do a redevelopment agreement like you're suggesting. One of the things that we like about the BETA on the ground level is that we're able to advertise that. The, the BETA has really stimulated our relationship with the brokerage community because we can advertise this program. It generates more phone calls. It generates more buzz at the trade shows. We don't, you know, laterally go to those events and do email blasts and say, come to a redevelopment agreement. You know, that's more of the purview of the board. But in terms of the BETA, it does allow for us to, to really generate that, those relationships, which I think is a, is a big, you know, we, I think sometimes when we first devised this program, we looked at the brick-and-mortar part of, of the program. But as you'll see in the second half of the memo, it has certainly generated a buzz. And, and just the marketing itself, three of our BETA's were on the, one was on the second page of the Daily Herald. One was on the back page of the Daily Herald. And one, one of the most recent articles that was in the Daily Herald was actually the most-read article of that day. So, just the sheer marketing aspect of the BETA program is also something to consider beyond just the bricks and mortar of it.
And I think it's always, it's always important to remind the general public that we earmarked additional revenue from gaming that we did not want to bury in the general fund like some state government does in order to improve the business community for all the residents. That's the key idea, right? Did it generate a lot of buzz in like cannabis retailers, or? It's a joke, Scott. I know you guys were targeting cannabis retailers when you were down there, so. Did it generate some buzz?
Their incentive is to sell cannabis.
Did you guys generate a buzz with them?
We're trying.
Okay.
You know, when I was reading this, the one thing that, you know, really I had concerns about is the last one, eliminate the option for reapplication for the same location. Currently, a location is. A location is eligible for BETA grant after two years of past since receiving grant?
Or just don't make it longer than two years. Two years is very...
Yeah. But we're eliminating that option, correct?
That's a proposal based on a recommendation.
How would that have affected Manny? Didn't Manny apply two years in a row?
Manny had, Manny did not apply for two years in a row. He applied for two pins, which equaled $100,000. And then after two years of one pin, that made O'Hare's eligible, and then Postamie as well on the other side, which was a separate pin.
Looks good.
I think we can all read, obviously, the eligible and non-eligible. I don't know that I'm, I'm sold on not allowing people, especially larger organizations. I think that part of the beauty of driving into a nice strip mall is the striping and the, a nice paved parking lot. And a lot of times, that goes unnoticed. I know we've had serious problems with the parking lot at, across from first cleaners or high first-class cleaners. That parking lot was terrible.
Oh, yeah.
And it would have probably got repaired earlier had we included that in potential BETA funds.
I think the point was, in doing this, was mainly non-adhereed or fixed items. So TVs, couches, tables, things that were, we as a board have approved, and the petitioner goes out of business, and they take those things with them, and that space is no longer attractive to the next user.
Yeah.
So I think by eliminating the items that can be carried out the door, I think was the biggest concern I had.
Yeah, I agree. What does everybody, how does everybody else feel about including potential parking lot repairs?
They'd be fine with me.
I just think it's important.
And you want that, just for clarity purposes, in general? I mean, our focus has always been on sales tax producing, but if you're looking at a mall, a shopping mall, how do you determine?
That would be coming from the landlord, obviously. But I think that the only one that I've come in, that has asked me about that was the owner of the building and also retailer. So I think that that would be interesting if they owned the building and they were the retailer, that we would include that as part of the things that they could use BETA funds for. So we could, we could word it that way, if they're the owner and the retailer. Say, for example, Tokyo Steakhouse wanted to redo their parking lot. I think that that would be an eligible expense. I think that would be...
Or for, or first-class cleaners.
Yeah, they're not there anymore, but yeah. Yeah.
Just not the general maintenance of it, though.
No.
No.
No. No maintenance, just...
Maintenance.
Like...
If they need to re...
Replacement.
Yeah, right.
I'd like to clarify one item going forward is the outdoor dining area. When you say outdoor dining area, are we referring to fence, concrete work, infrastructure enhancements? Or are we talking about umbrellas, tables, and chairs under that particular line item?
Prior to this memo, all of the above would have been considered. But based on some of the feedback we've received, tables, loose tables and chairs would no longer be included, if that's the direction you wanted to go with this memo.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I do agree with that.
Nothing that can be taken.
Okay, what else we got here?
Again, things that stay with the infrastructure are important.
I think that's about it.
The dollar amount is a big one, in terms of what dollar amount you would like to see.
I hate to restrict it based on, like I said, a lump sum, because then that doesn't give you guys a lot of ammunition when somebody comes in and says, hey, you know. Thinking, thinking the other way, though, those larger dollar investors are going to want some type of sales rebate. They're not really going to be too concerned with our BETA program, is my guess. So.
I don't have a problem. Capping it was, I was just looking at the other communities. I was, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the different percentages. I just think we should pick a percentage. I think that's very subjective when it's, this project is 27%, this project is 17%.
Right here.
I think that puts a lot of...
One of them is 50%.
No, that's something that would just take some pressure off of, you know, Tony and and Scott, if they just know, these are the eligible expenses, up to a certain amount of dollar amount, you can, we will, you know, refund 50% or whatever the percentage is.
So Kevin, you're thinking more like, you have to spend, let's say, 300,000 to get 50,000?
Yeah, I I don't know that, that I think the, I think the heart of the program is just to make it attractive for people to improve their business. So let's not get too far in the weeds. How do we do that? Make it attractive enough that people use it. Frankly, that's a problem that we had with the TIF program downtown. Nobody used it because it wasn't really that attractive, and nobody really wanted to improve anything. So this is making, making it, making the program attractive enough that people use it. And it has some type of, some type of a variable that says, okay, if you do this, we'll fund up to this amount, right?
Could we do like a targeted campaign? Like, let's say if we identify that there's so many areas, like these areas look bad, where we say, in this month, you can get $50,000 for fixing up your facade and parking lot. Could we do something like that to try to push, to make, to beautify some of the...
We can do that. We can use our email blasts with our businesses and brokers and highlight specific tenants of the program, absolutely.
Okay.
I think we should take a moment and discuss the the time eligibility. I think it's the last bullet
Yeah.
Point. No, it's not the last bullet point. Where is it? And it's just a suggestion on here, I think.
Establishing timeframe for being in business?
Yes, the last two, yeah. The, you're referring to the two years, Trustee Swansky?
I think so. Maybe it's not on here. I think, I think that during one of the discussions, we, it was, and it wasn't necessarily something that anybody felt strongly about, but do we require, require someone to be in business for a year before we, before they can apply? But was that even on here?
There's a bullet point here saying establishing a timeframe for being in business before eligibility for the program. So not for funding startups. So, yeah, I mean, that would be a good addition, I think. So at least being in business for a year, I think would be a good number.
Then would they be able to, to go back and apply for the expenses that they did to? I had to improve this space. I used the eligible, I went through the eligible list, and I did, I did the items that are on your eligibility list now, and I paid for it. Now I've been in business for a year.
I don't think it's retroactive. I think it's got to be new improvements. I think that, I'm, I feel strongly about that because if somebody doesn't have enough capital in order to open a business, it shouldn't be part of the BETA programs, like, use to, to get them open, pay out, pay out startup costs.
Just so we know what we're, what we're talking about.
It has to be for improvements.
The first one we ever did was a new business, and they had to have a kitchen and bathroom put in, and they moved in. Well, then it was able to turn into another restaurant when they left.
But that was for the benefit of the landlord.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying, that was the first one we did.
Yeah, I think a one-year moratorium and no retroactive expenses. It's got to be new improvements that they're looking at doing after a year. That's my opinion.
Absolutely.
Existing businesses for at least one year.
So the, so the funding would not be part of a new business, is what you're suggesting?
You eliminate the lure, then.
Yeah, that's true.
Then there's no, like...
So my, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. My proposal or my thought was, if a new business comes in, they want to apply for this. And let's just say our staff brings a business to the table, and they want to be built, and they want to build a Bartlett. Do we approve the BETA at this certain amount, but they don't get a payout for a year, so that we can establish credibility? And in the event that they go out of business, we cancel the pending BETA payment?
I like that idea.
That's what, that's...
That was the original thought process.
We had discussed, right.
Okay.
New businesses or existing businesses would have to be here a year, performing in our town for a year.
Okay, I'm good with that. Is anybody else good with that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And I want to caveat that, I believe they should...
You left, and I was trying to explain that.
Oh, so I believe they should be able to apply for it as a new business, but understand that they're not going to get their payment until they've been open for X amount of months or a year. So.
Like Maria's not getting paid for a year.
All right, do we have enough, do we have enough to go by now? I think just, let's just leave it at 50,000 for right now. It's been attractive for you guys. What is your opinion?
And the, I, I mean, my opinion is that I think that's a good amount. I think we do need clarity on the financial assistance to flat 50%. To be honest with you, from my perspective, I think if we're getting a business that has, take example for 120 Live, and the vitality that created along that roadway at a time when we didn't have a lot of lights on the downtown, I would treat that differently than a code compliance item, like, for example, a fire suppression or a trash enclosure.
Isn't it 50% right now? Up to 50,000?
It is, it is up to, it is up to, $50,000 is the maximum an applicant can receive.
Right.
Up to 50%.
Up to 50%.
That's correct.
So if we just say, if we just make it a flat 50% up to?
You could, but that, that also puts you in a position where they're filling out an application, and perhaps you don't feel 50% is appropriate. But that's certainly something that we can do.
I like up to. I like the way it is now, yeah.
I think that's the same, but now that I'm hearing it, up to a certain, right, dollar.
Okay.
Okay, so that's going to say the same.
That would...
It's going to change the eligibility items, right?
Yeah.
And the, the timeframe to, for new businesses, to be able to...
And the payout.
Well, let's go back to what it's for. It's an incentive. We're not here to support an upstart. If you're going to start a business, you should have the capital. You should be, you should be looking at a two-year, a five-year business plan, and you're in it to win it, right? You know, and anything that we offer through BETA is just going to be a bonus, a nice incentive for them. That's how we have to look at it.
I agree. Did we beat it enough?
Let's just also point out that the amount of gaming revenue we get, this is only a fraction of the money that comes in as going to BETA. It's not the entire gaming fund tax.
What is the percentage?
And when you talk about expediting the BETA grants for science, which I like that idea, what do you, I mean, do you just say, you foresee just skipping the Economic Development Committee for that, or?
50%, roughly. And it's continuing to grow as we keep adding machines, and we're keeping it roughly it? Are we keeping it as a percentage or an amount?
The current amount of money allocated to the BETA program and the administration department's line item is 250,000. The current gaming that we're receiving, generating revenue right now, is projected to be about $400,000 a year. I imagine that will grow a bit more.
Have we ran out of BETA funds, ever?
No, never.
Okay.
We have yet to spend the full amount either.
I would hope we would never run out. But we should also have some type of a side appropriation for whatever funds we don't use, and put it into something, other incentives or some type of a... What do you have for that, Paula? I see you're perking up. Capital? Capital, all right, that's a great segue. All right, everybody.
We beat that dish to death.
Yeah, I'm done. I'm excited to talk about the capital budget now.
All right, thank you Chairman Gansey. Next item we have is Finance Committee Chairman Laporte.
Submitted for our consideration is the Capital Improvement Program for the fiscal years 2023 to 2024 through 2027 to 2028. It identifies long-range needs and proposes a multi-year financial plan to address them. The Capital Improvements Program began in the early 1980s, formalizing a commitment to provide for orderly and appropriately financed growth of municipal facilities. It is a financial tool that allows the village to take a long-range view of our needs. And for further information, we'll pass it over to staff.
Thank you. I'm going to thank you for that introduction. That's where I'm going to start tonight. We're going to go, I'm going to go over a brief summary of the Capital Improvement Program, and I'm going to turn it over to the Public Works Director, and he's going to go through a lot of the, most of the projects are public works projects. Again, it is a five-year program. The first year is the current year that we're in. The second year is what we call the capital budget, and that's what gets rolled into our next operating budget. And then there's three years after that. The reason why we start the capital budget, or Capital Improvement Program now, early in the year, is so that that first year, the capital budget, that we can get started on as far as preparing for projects, and then going out to bid even, authorizing projects, and so that they can get started in the summer at the beginning of the next fiscal year. So the total of this program is $95,219,000. That's about 16% up from the prior year. This page shows what we've been spending. You can see in the '22, '23 year, we spent just about $30 million. And the, this estimated is just about the same amount, $28 million. You can see back in 2018, 2019, at the very beginning, that's where we were ending our water connection project. On the second page, down in the lower-left corner, it talks about the '24, '25 highlights. And this talks about our capital budget. The '24, '25 year totals $27,719,600. And that would be the, this next year, the portion that would roll into our operating budget. I'm going to skip over. Well, this last page here then shows the sources of funding for these projects. We still have the 2019 bonds, the IPA loans is a lot going into the wastewater treatment plant, motor fuel tax. We also down, second from the bottom is the general fund, $7.7 million. We had some discussions about the general fund, fund balance, and what the policy should be to level them out. So this, this Capital Improvement Program is proposing to use just over $7.7 million from the general fund. This just again shows the number of projects we have going this year and next year compared to trailing off a little bit as the Devon Avenue excess flow facility is completed and the wastewater treatment plant. I'm going to skip ahead. This is page T10. This is the year that we're going to be focusing on, the '24, '25 year. There are 25 projects for the total of $27,719,600. Again, this is, this is the part that would be, we would call the capital budget. So that's a brief overview about the total budget, the capital budget. I'm going to turn it over now to Dan.
Thank you. Good evening. We're going to go through all the different utilities and street program stuff. I'll hand it over to Tyler. He's going to cover water and sewer. We're going to hit the highlights of what we completed this year. As you know, we've got some multi-year projects, big projects that are going to roll into next year. Tyler will touch base on that. And then I'll take it and do the streets and other budget line items and some of the, not a lot of changes you'll see if you've gone through it. There's a couple of new ones, but we'll give some updates on some of those. I'll hand it over to Tyler.
And then, good evening. Yeah, like he said, I'm just going to hit the highlights of water and sewer. I've narrowed this down to about two hours, so.
Two minutes, Tyler.
Oh, you got it. So I guess we'll just jump right into it. It's, we'll go to page four. It's the Water Man and Lead Service Replacement Program. It's the water main and lead service replacement program. So this, initially we had a lead service replacement project, but the loan forgiveness funding that the state was offering is no longer. So right now what we're doing is replacing lead services in the areas where we're doing water main replacement. And as you can see on the graph, we're doing every other year, which is the opposite alternating year of the road resurfacing with the thought, we'll get better pricing with a larger project, and we could focus more on that project. Jumping ahead to page eight, and if there's any questions in the meantime, don't be afraid to stop me. So on infrastructure improvements associated with the water transition, one of them I wanted to touch on was the Sterns Road pump station. This one was already awarded, but due to waiting on equipment deliveries, which is a common theme through a lot of this, it is now pushed to next year. So the project's awarded, it's funded, it's just waiting to get the equipment there. Then the Hanover Park interconnect and South Elgin interconnect, we're hoping to get those agreements in the next year so that we can make those emergency connections should we need them if anything happens.
How do those agreements work for the interconnect?
So they vary, but like the one with Streamwood is DuPage Water will let us provide X amount. They use Jawa, which allows them to usually provide ideally the same amount in the event one of the systems goes down for a prolonged period of time and will need our water supplemented.
So it benefits both communities?
Yeah.
It's for emergency purposes only. We do have to bring it to DuPage Water Commission to get approval, but it's for emergency. We can't wheel to one of these other communities. It's strictly emergency, both if the other community were to have it issued, they would contact us and then vice versa.
So right now we still have the spigot for the wells on for emergencies?
Correct.
But also, if they're not part of DuPage Water Commission, like with Hanover Park, we're negotiating amounts with them. Currently, we're sharing the cost to update a study for the emergency loop. Hanover Park had some older numbers, and so we agreed to split the cost to update that so that we can have a right amount, and then we'll begin negotiating with them.
Thank you.
And then, jump ahead to page 12, the water meter changeout. This is ongoing currently, so you may have gotten the letters. We have replaced as of right now 1,800 meters and expected by the end of the calendar year, it'll be 2,100 total meters changed out, which will leave about 12,000 to go. So we're cruising along, but it's, yeah, about four more years. And then finally for the water, as far as changes go on page 14, I just wanted to point out the Oneida water tower removal. This one's been postponed and pushed off until we can settle on not only a new water tower location, but for prices of steel to go down, which is one of the big holdups in getting that new tower installed. Then if anyone's interested in hydrant painting, that's...
Is this both water towers here and Oneida? Is that what, the one right next to the village hall?
So that's the Main Street, I guess, yeah, the Main Street wellhouse and the pump station, those we are looking to demo this coming year. Those are already capped, they're done, so we'll be getting a contractor to eliminate those, and then there'll be open space.
What are we going to do with that space, do we know? Like just...
We'll be up to the board to decide what you would like to do with that. Becomes available land for parking, selling for commercial, which I think that's another discussion that needs to be had at some point.
I was just curious, I didn't know if there was a plan.
All right, let's go.
All right, so moving on to sewer. So with sewer, there's no new projects, it's all more updates. So we'll move to page 21 with the sanitary sewer system rehab. This is your main lining, your service lining, manhole rehab, those types of things. This is staying the same, we're making pretty good progress, so we're looking to keep that moving. Next one would be page 23, the Devon Project everyone knows about. So right now the Forest Main is moving along, they're currently on Grant and Bragg, and they're planning on continuing to work as long as weather stays nice and decent for them to continue to temporary asphalt. The lift station has broken ground, and hopefully depending on equipment delivery on that one, that one should hopefully come in a little quicker.
Is that project under budget?
Yes, currently it is below budget.
Hoping it stays that way. Then, on page 25 with other lift station upgrades, we did complete the Herrick House Lift Station in Forest Main, which is just off West Bartlett, turning into Railroad here. The next two other lift stations, we're looking to convert over to wet wells from dry wells will be every two years, just to kind of space them out. And then last but not least for me, on page 46, it's the treatment plant update or upgrade, and I wanted to bring more attention to, on the left is the aerial prior to the project, and this is just from a couple of months ago. On the right, and even now, it's already different from that. We're having, we're getting equipment changed over to us, and then we actually recently got the switchgear delivered early. So the good news there is hopefully the substantial completion should be able to move up, which would save us time and money. And I strongly recommend going to see it because it is, it changes every day. And that's it for water and sewer. If there's any questions, otherwise I'm going to hand it over to Dan.
Just a quick question, something I was reading here. You have a, the Eastview Middle School Lift Station, would that fall under the Lake Street TIF?
It'll be close to the area.
It's on the school property?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Dan, he left you one minute.
All right, I'll go quick. MFT, page 51. This just shows the alternating years, like Tyler said, on the water main replacement. Water main replacement basically is the even years, odd years will be resurfacing. We also, you'll see later on, we have North and Oak. We're hoping to get some SDP funding that would also be, we're hoping to get the funding for the 25, 26 fiscal year. We're pretty confident on the North Avenue portion. The Oak is a little behind, so we're not sure if we'll get that funding or not, but we'll keep pushing for it. Page 53, IDA intersections. I just wanted to update on the Route 59 West Bartlett. I know that has been brutal, but the good news is they're getting real close to finishing the pavement geometrics, and the goal is before winter, have all those geometric improvements completed. They'll still have temp signals up, but your dual lefts, your right turn lane, all that stuff will be operational, so most of the headaches will go away, other than they still have landscape restoration, which if the weather cooperates, they'll try to get a lot of that done. We still have streetlights to go in, which they've been working on foundation on that, and then the permanent signals still need to be completed. So at some point they'll kind of pull the plug for winter, and then they'll come back and finish whatever they haven't finished in the spring. Page 57, bike paths. Two things there, we completed the South Bartlett Bike Path, you probably saw that, going from, they said the horse farm down to the library. That's a great path that we were able to complete, and we, our crews continued to complete Bike Path on Newport, they wrapped around onto Sterns, and also on Struckman. Page 59, parking lots. If you've been out by Oak or Oneida, those lots are currently under construction. We were really pushing to try to get it done before Thanksgiving. Unfortunately, with weather and then some delays with underground storage tanks and that we had to deal with, it's looking more like next week we'll get those pretty much wrapped up. The pavers are on site, they need to put the pavers down. I was hoping to be able to open up the Banbury portion and then continue on, but with the pavers, you really got to get them all in, otherwise if you start putting traffic on it, it could shift them, and then it would mess up the paver, so. But the good news is I think they're going to plan on working Friday and Saturday to try to get this wrapped up by next week, so.
And one on Oneida then?
Both.
Mary and Bright?
Yeah.
We hope so. As long as the weather cooperates. Page 61 is one of the new projects, that's downtown sidewalks. This would be, we've talked about this in the past, we completed a sidewalk improvement at Oak and Railroad. The plan would be to continue that pattern heading east to Main Street. It's a multi-year project that we would just keep doing sections each year until we're done with all the brick pavers into downtown.
Could we, the graphic was up, but the downtown sidewalks, can we redo along Eastern Avenue along the elementary school? The sidewalks are pretty, in pretty bad shape along there, so. On the east side of Eastern Avenue, south of North Avenue.
Yes, we could take a look at it. Page 64, this is the Metro project. We received some Metro funding. It's the, we're calling it the Depot/Metra concept, leaving on the concept plan. So this is what, we've been working with our landscape architect. This, I think we've shown some different concepts previously. This is where we're at with the concept in this location. The plan would be to get this final design moving this winter with hopefully construction next summer timeframe. Page 68.
What I had in mind for our gaming revenue, the sidewalk replacement and, and the downtown improvements, that in my head seemed like a natural place to put that other gaming revenue.
I think that's a great idea.
That's kind of, the next project is Town Center. Fountain is in need of some repair, and as we started getting into it, we started looking at some of the landscaping and other things out there. We ended up having our landscape architect take a look at that as well. We are, we have some concept plans that we're working on. The plan here would be kind of renew the town center area with a different type of fountain, stream, that type of concept. We would be looking at doing it in multi-year phases where we would pick pieces and ultimately, but we want to have a concept plan that we can bring to the board, make sure everyone is comfortable with that, and then we would just kind of phase it in over several years. The thought there.
Is there a way during this process to add some additional parking there at all?
We, well, yeah, we could. I mean, you could take part of the green, I think I saw a plan at one point, you have to take away part of the town center area, park area if you will, and add parking, like if you envision, when you pull into that development, there's parking on, towards the building side, you could look at adding parking on the west side of that drive aisle, but it would eat into your park space, so that would be the opportunity probably. Or you, that probably would be your best opportunity.
Do you want to look at the wellhouse adjacent to the, across the street, the wellhouse adjacent to the water parking lot?
Right. Yeah, part of the, part of the demo is the wellhouse right next to the fire burn, and the plan would be, if you see the head-in parking spaces to the east of that, extending that west through where the wellhouse currently is. So that, it's not going to gain you a ton of spaces, but it's going to gain you some spaces.
I think we should keep the green space.
I agree with keeping the green space.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, it's great, but...
Talk about development, and that parking there is really hard.
But then, then, then everything's concrete, you know. I mean, if you look on the other side of the tracks, there's a boatload of parking, you know, just east of TLs.
We can look at some of the, you know, as we move some of the wellhouses and some of the, we could reevaluate the downtown parking, you know, a little bit of the catch for what we can get some more.
Any other questions? Under Economic Development, one thing on there, as you know, the Brewster Creek TIF is, is going away, but if you've been out there, we were able to get all the roads paved. We're working on the bike paths along Munger Road. We're probably looking at having gravel put down and then asphalt in the spring, but we will have a bike path that will run from West Bartlett all the way down to Sterns.
Hey, Dan, as part of that, a couple of weeks ago, the gentleman came in and talked about putting signage on the bike paths promoting some of the businesses or whatnot in downtown Bartlett. Any, any plans for signage or any, any review on that? Just to get the people that are on the west side of town to know that Bartlett's down here, we got more brewing, we got, you know, just signage in general.
Yeah, we can...
It was a good idea, I just don't know if anything was followed up on it.
Yeah, we can look at doing some of those.
We've discussed a little bit at Bike and Run about committee talking about creating a wayfinding signage plan, so that's something that we can have that commission kind of start looking at.
Cool, thank you.
There is a beer within two miles of this path.
I know when we ran it, that beer looked really good.
Then...
500 more feet.
The last couple of items that I had to cover were under stormwater on page 82, PDF page 82, I'm sorry, which is a stormwater. On this one, you'll see Country Creek is probably the big project. It was a, that project has gotten more complicated as we've gotten into the design portion of it. There's not a lot of room, and in order to try to get grant funding, you have to be able to do a native planting, and with the limited space, what we're looking at is kind of gabian baskets, which is basically rocks in a wire mesh and building a wall. So it's not real appealing. The next step is to have a neighborhood meeting with the residents along the creek there and try to get some input from them on what they like, what they don't like. We're talking with the consultant to have some, they have previous projects that show the gabian baskets and then several years afterwards and how they fill in. And then alternatives. Gabian baskets, we can't get grant funding through like the Army Corps or DNR because it's basically, there's no... because it's basically, there's no natural benefit there. We looked at even trying to use a box culvert and just pipe basically the creek. That definitely is gonna be a hard struggle for the Army Corps and DNR to approve something like that. So there's, we're limited on our options. So we wanna get some feedback from the neighborhood, and then hopefully, from there, we can narrow it down. We even talked about the possibility of trying to break it up into several different phases. There's several culvert pipes under Country and Francine. There are the corrugated metal pipes similar to the Munger Road culvert, which, I didn't provide an update on that, but that one, the box culvert actually went in place on, yesterday. So that one's ahead of schedule. We're hoping to get that road opened up in the next couple weeks. They have, still have to pave, put up guardrail due to restoration stuff, but we should be ahead of schedule on that one. But what we would do on Country Creek is maybe Phase One would be replace those corrugated metal pipes, extend some of those in areas where, if you're familiar with Country, the east-west portion of Country, where the creek crosses, the house on the south side, there's, I mean, they've done all kinds of things, but they've got fence falling in and that type of thing. The plan would be to extend that box culvert past that area to try to level that out and avoid the erosion that's happening there. So it's little pieces there that we could maybe knock off. But the long term, we still have to figure out a solution for the rest of the creek where we've got very steep drop-offs. And we need to get some feedback from the neighborhood before we finalize plans on that one.
Is there a landscape architect that could help with that? That could kinda help with the grant portion of it and help with the residents? Put some concepts together where...
Yeah, the engineers have some different options. The problem right now, what the original plan, when we were thinking initially, was gabion basket, flat area where we can do plantings, gabion basket, you know, kinda tiered. There's just not a lot of room. And I don't think we're gonna hear from the residents saying, "Oh, yeah, you can have twenty, thirty feet in my backyard, because their, their yards aren't that big as it is." So that's the, that's the hard part.
They're losing their yards every year.
Some of them are.
They're gonna have to make a decision.
Right, some are, others aren't, that's the problem. You know, when you go down a creek, one side is having an issue, the other isn't. And I have a feeling I'm gonna hear from the ones that, and I've already talked to a lot of the ones that have the erosion, it's the ones on the backside that aren't. So that's where we need to get some neighborhood feedback, so. The last project is the columbarium, and we've got news that it is due to be delivered on the 14th of December. So we will actually have a columbarium in place, hopefully, on December 14th. We already have had interest to purchase spaces on that, so we kind of took out, out years based on, we'll see how the sales go. And in future years, if we're getting close to selling out, then we would propose to add another columbarium at that time.
Who's in charge of selling those?
We do it now, we do it now, so.
Yeah. So is that located right at the entrance?
Yes, there's actually a pad out there right now. If you enter in and off to the right, on the east side of the entry, there's a...
How many more could we put there, potentially?
On that stretch there, I think we saw, we could at least, we can do at least another two or three in that area, but then when you go kind of north of the W in West North Avenue, there's a whole area in that area where we could add a lot more.
People are...
Opportunities to, and from what we heard when we went and visited Wheaton, once you sell them, then they can't even keep up with...
They're dying to get in there.
Yes.
Dying to get in there, Joey, Joey, Joey.
My kids would, my kids would appreciate that.
It's time, it's time.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Roosam outlook. No.
Thank you very much.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it. So the next step then would be to approve this 24, 25 year to authorize Public Works to start moving on the four, on the, on the projects and to be able to issue awards before the next year starts.
And I would just, I would just say that Dan and Todd and their staffs did a nice job of taking a hard look at where we could reduce costs on those programs going out and as well as smoothing them out, those costs over multiple years. We took some projects that had shorter timeframes and kicked them to different years so that we could spread out those costs and not spike it.
Beautiful.
Bartlett Hills, we needed a sprinkler system addressed?
Oh, that's one more, that's the last section. It's the last section of the packet.
It's in the municipal building fund.
Didn't get there yet.
And they were delayed. It was supposed to be installed this year. Oh, I'm tired. Yeah. Well, it was held up because the board didn't make up their mind. We could've had it completed this year, and now we're only doing it in the spring. We're doing one hole at a time, but the golf course will stay open, because the driving range is going to be the extra hole that we keep open, so we'll still have an eighteen-hole golf course. But my understanding, all of the, all the material's been delivered.
You're talking about irrigation.
Talking about the sprinklers in the building.
Oh, in the building. I thought you were talking about the irrigation system on the golf course. I'm excited about the irrigation system.
Yeah.
It's gonna make the course...
Apparently, really excited.
Clubhouse Fire Sprinklers, we're currently working on trying to get the first, we broke that up into two halves, basically. We're trying to get half of it done this year, and then the other half done the following year. So we're, we're currently working on that.
Does the golf course pay into the municipal building fund?
Funds don't pay into the municipal fund. Municipal fund money is collected from developers, has been collected from developers in the past, and we've transferred excess funds from the general fund into the municipal fund.
That project should be funded from the golf course, since it's an enterprise fund. So I think that should be figured out, out of their budget, so. Who's running this show, chairman? Are we done?
Yeah, if that's, if there's no other questions.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Gansey. Please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Dunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yep.
Laporte?
Yes.
Swansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.